All right. Hi, everybody. So we're going to do something a little different tonight. Commissioner Vice Chair Torres is feeling a little bit under the weather with her voice. So I am going to ask you guys one of two options. One, if you guys would like to nominate a temporary chair for tonight, you know, let me know and we can first and second that. Or two, if y'all allow me to, I will nominate a chair for tonight so we can do our meeting. So do I have any motions for anyone that wants to be a temporary chair? Or do I have any motions for me to select a chair for tonight?
I motion to have Skyhawk chair the meeting for us. Is that the right phrase?
No, I'm going to select it. Select one of you.
Oh, you're going to select.
Yeah, I'll select one of you guys.
Oh, okay.
And can we motion to select someone?
Yes, that was my first one.
Okay, I motion to select Yawei.
Do I hear a second?
I second.
All right.
Motion by Commissioner Diaz and seconded by Commissioner Rodriguez to have Commissioner Jagway be chair of today's meeting. I'll do a roll call vote. Commissioner Diaz?
Yes.
Commissioner?
Oh.
Yes.
I know. Thank you.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Jagway?
Yes.
Commissioner Nelson is absent. Commissioner Reyes?
Yes.
And Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Wu?
Yes.
Vice Chair Zakaris Torres. And Chairperson Herrera is also absent. The one, two, three. That is seven ayes and zero nays and two absent. That motion carries.
All right, Commissioner Jagway, the floor is yours.
Does she need a hit in? Okay. I hereby call this Parks and Rec Community Services Commission meeting to order on Thursday, October 23 at 5:36 PM. Recording Secretary, will you please conduct roll call?
Yes.
Commissioner Diaz?
Here.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Here.
Commissioner Jagway?
Here.
Commissioner Nelson, absent. Commissioner Reyes?
Here.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Here.
Commissioner Wu?
Here.
Vice Chair Zakaris Torres?
Here.
Chairperson Herrera is absent. Records show we have seven members present. Chair Herrera, you have a quorum. Or sorry, Chair Jagway, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have the Pledge of Allegiance. If able, will you guys please join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Chair Jagway, if I can have my second surprise of the night. I'd like to indulge the commissioners. Commissioner Nelson, welcome. I'd like to indulge the commission to have a special before we start our Employee of the Month. I'd like to see if you will allow me to invite someone up to the podium for a special message to you guys. I do need a first and second, if you don't mind.
First. Motion?
Yeah.
A second.
Okay. Motion by Chair Jagway and seconded by Commissioner Diaz to move the...
Have a special presentation before Employee of the Month.
Have a special presentation before Employee of the Month. I will now do a roll call vote. Commissioner Diaz?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Jagway?
Yes.
Commissioner Nelson?
Yes.
Commissioner Reyes?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Wu?
Yes.
Vice Chair Zakaris Torres?
Yes.
And Chair Herrera is absent. That is, the vote is eight ayes, zero nays, one absent. That motion carries.
All right, thank you commissioners. At this time, I'd like to invite up to the mic Ms. Suzie Fujanik for a special and heartfelt message to our commission tonight.
Good evening. Good evening commissioners. It's good to see you. I'm here tonight because I won't be able to attend our regular meeting next month because I am retiring. And my... My retirement, my last day will be next Friday, October 31st. So I wanted to come. I wanted to make sure that I came to bid you all a big heartfelt adieu. I love you all. Thank you so much for your support. It's been a pleasure serving and... I'm sorry, I'm a little numb today. But I... Oh my goodness. My goodness. Yes, I've been with the city for 34 years, so this is a pretty big decision. It was a hard decision, but I think it was the right decision and it's time. And I think we got a lot of balls in motion. We got a lot accomplished. We got a lot of conversations started that were really important and really meaningful. I live in the city. I'm going to be around. I love the city. I love what I do. And I don't know, you know. I'm going to see what life puts in front of me.
You can join us at the...
Can I vote no?
I second.
So I just wanted to say thank you all and farewell. And it's been a real pleasure and I will miss you all.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Well, it's not congratulations. I would like to give each one of you a little bit of time to say something to Suzie because again, 34 years. 1991 is when Suzie started her journey with the city of Santa Ana. And I can't begin to tell you how much she has done for everyone, whether it's the Public Works Department, the Parks and Recreation Department, to the community, to the citizens, to the projects she spearheaded, to her can-do attitude, you know, and that's what she did. And I'm very proud to be able to have worked with her for the past four years on a number of projects. My deputy directors, one who is here today, Ethan Fisher, as well as Tim Pagano, have nothing but the uttermost respect for the, just everything she brought. And Ethan had some great stories today, which I want to hear more about this on the floor, lighting it up and all that. So, the anteater. So if we can, Chair, just each one of you to just say thank you. And you know, Suzie, you deserve this. You deserve everything that's coming to you. And we wish you nothing but clear horizons and safe journeys as you take on your new adventure.
Yeah, I just want to say even from the short time that I've known you, you've always been very detail oriented. And I've always been impressed with just how much you know. And I can tell the level of work and detail that you put into all that you do. So thank you and I'm sure you've done so much, which we didn't even know, you know. So appreciate it. Thank you, Suzie, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Yes, I've enjoyed your passion, your ideas. You exceeded what I wanted for Park and Rec and the parks in the community. I've worked, done a lot, I've worked, done a lot of volunteer work and had seen different changes, but very positive. I'm very saddened. I want you to think this over. Maybe it's not a good idea, but retirement is good and I can understand it. But thank you very much for the great work you did for us.
I... That Suzie in our neighborhood, she happens to be one of my neighbors. Unbeknownst, I was on the commission and she was walking by with her dogs. And we started chatting about, you know, everything, you know, dogs and this and that. And then kind of stumbled into the fact that...
Kids.
Kids. And then, yeah, I mean, so to know what, how she approaches our city just as a person, as a contributing member of our society is above and beyond. But her work that she did within the city is amazing. And I'm grateful not only to be your neighbor, but have had an opportunity to work with you. And I wish you a happy Halloween and we will celebrate with lots of candy. So, thank you.
Congratulations, Suzie. Honestly, every time I see your name on an email, I'm looking forward to reading it because they are so informational and I can just hear you talking like as I'm reading it. You are the first person that taught me what footsall was at Jerome Center when Jesse was requesting soccer fields. And so every time I think of footsall, I think of you. And everything that I've learned from parks has been either through your emails or the presentations that you've done. And so I'm going to miss you. Thank you for everything that you've done and happy retirement.
Well, Suzie, I was hoping you were not retired yet, but I think the decision has been made. All I can say is that I am very, very grateful to have met you. And thank you for working alongside each and every one of us and being there for the community and always guiding us and always having so many great ideas. You always explained everything so well. I don't know what we're going to do without you. I know you still live in the city, but join us in the different events. Don't be a stranger. And I just don't have any words. Like this is the total shock for me. But congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Suzie. The short time that I've met you, I admire you. I had, every time I heard you speaking, I kept thinking, how can she keep all this in her head and all these projects, big projects, that she's done? I really admire you and I think you did the right decision. It is time for you and it is the best time right now that you're still healthy. You can do things that you couldn't do while working. And I just, I think it's the best decision and congratulations. And may God keep you healthy for a long, long time.
Suzie, congratulations. I haven't known you long, but in the short term, you're very knowledgeable. Your information has been great. You have led us through many difficult situations. Most importantly, as a retired senior, the first day after you retire and you're going to wake up and say, I don't have to go to work today. It's my time. So this is your time. Enjoy it. And be healthy, happy, content with your decision. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And last but not least, one more. I'm going to be reading for Vice Chair Torres. She's a little bit under the weather. So Suzie, your love for the city is very visible. Thank you for inspiring future city leaders and residents. Your legacy will live on within all of the projects you brought to life. Hoping to have coffee with you soon. Vice Chair Torres. Sorry. So again, the last one, we'd like to get a picture with you and our commissioners. So Commissioner, if I can indulge you all to come on down to have a picture with Ms. Fujanik. And Mike's bringing up one of the gifts that Public Works brought. So I'd like to get you guys up there with her one last time. All right, once again, thank you so much, Suzie. Now let's get back on with our rigorously scheduled program. Commissioner Jagway, show is yours.
All right. Now we have the Parks and Rec Employees of the Month. Okay. I'll start. So it'll be for the month of October, we have Alex Mosqueta. He's a Zookeeper One and he's nominated by his supervisor Jenny Walker. Alex is one of the many shining stars of PR CSA. This nomination is for recent work with one of the animals on his string, Abby our Dexter cow. Abby's experiencing some age-related health issues and Alex has been able to quickly pivot his training plans with Abby to facilitate her evolving care needs. Additionally, Alex is eager to grow and learn within his profession and recently attended the American Association of Zookeepers Annual Conference. At the meetings, Alex learned valuable information pertaining to many animals at our zoo that can be applied to continue keeping us at the forefront of development in the zoo world. Alex is always willing to lend a hand to coworkers and is a positive advocate for animals in the organization. Thank you, Alex. Do we have any other employees? Two more.
This goes for Evelyn Rodriguez, who is a senior program leader. She's been with the city for two years. And she's been nominated by Alan Lopez Pisano, Recreation Specialist. I would like to nominate Evelyn Rodriguez for Employee of the Month for her exceptional passion in serving our community and as a key part of the Garfield Community Center programming. Evelyn has been instrumental in creating flyers for the Teen Excursion Program and other activities at Garfield, while also assisting with parent communication, mass emails, and informing patrons of our new Teen Excursion handbook. She consistently demonstrates excellent customer service and leadership, helping oversee the Teen Excursion Program with professionalism and dedication. Her creativity, organization, and reliability have made a direct impact on the success of our programs. Evelyn has been with PR CSA for two years and continues to be an outstanding example of what a senior program leader should be. She always brings positive energy, laughter, and enthusiasm to the center, making her a joy to work alongside. Evelyn's strong work ethic and commitment to serving the youth of Santa Ana is truly inspiring. Evelyn's hard work and dedication greatly benefits our community and is deserving of this recognition. Congratulations.
I have Employee of the Month, Itzel Reyes. Itzel has been part of the Zoo Education Department since July 2022. She has shown great enthusiasm for connecting with zoo guests of all ages. Recently, Itzel has become a key leader in our Super Sunday Storytime Program. Fluent in both English and Spanish, Itzel has shown great skill in presenting a complete storytime program in both languages, often translating on the fly, while reading a story and sharing information about our ambassador animals. She has taken ownership of this well-loved program, choosing books and working closely with coworkers to provide a consistent, quality program for our youngest guests and their parents. Itzel reached special achievements in presenting a complete program by herself, stepping up when other staff were not available. Thank you, Itzel, for taking initiative and sharing your skills with our team and guests. Congratulations.
Thanks, employees, for all the hard work and dedication to our city. Next, we have the zoning code update presentation. I'd like to call up, I'd like to invite Planning and Building Senior Planner Siri Champion up to present.
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I recognize that this project is going to look a little bit different from the types of projects that you usually see and speak on. I'm hopeful that you find it interesting and engaging and I hope also to hear your input because it's very valuable to this process that we are undergoing. With that, we'll move to the first slide. How many of you are familiar with a zoning code? A few of you. Okay. So we'll move forward. A zoning code is important because good codes make good communities. A zoning code determines what kind of uses can go where and what kind of uses should not go next to one another so that we can have nice residential neighborhoods. We can have opportunities for commercial businesses. We have opportunities for office and for industrial uses and they can all coexist throughout the city. We'll go to the next slide. Zoning involves identification of different types of districts, including residential, commercial, industrial, open space, institutional, and other types of districts. And using these, we determine what kinds of uses can go where. We'll go to the next slide. So the vision for the city is expressed in the general plan. We'll look at the next slide. The vision includes preservation of existing neighborhoods, residential neighborhoods, as well as the promotion of jobs and industry, as well as the construction of vibrant corridors where people can go to walk, to bike, to take transit, to go out to dinner, to get services, to go to a movie, really to do a wide variety of different things in key areas of the city. And then all of these together make this vision for the city. And the job of the zoning code is to implement that vision through specific rules. Throughout this process, we've consulted with our community stakeholders and we've heard many different things about what they'd like to see accomplished through the zoning code. We had interviews with stakeholders. We've had workshops. Three, a series of three workshops, I mean, sorry, a three series, three rounds of workshops with six workshops in each series. There we go. We also have done study session with the Planning Commission. During those meetings, we've heard a variety of key themes. First of all, we've heard support for that vision of creating walkable, vibrant, mixed-use areas. And you can see here some examples of what those could look like. Higher density and intensity uses. Uses that are oriented toward the sidewalk. Uses that are mixed together with commercial on the ground floor and residential up above. We've also heard about the need for more open space and housing. And that's something that I know you hear about as well, the need for more open space. And in order to achieve that open space, we've talked about the possibility of providing privately owned open space. That's privately owned, public, open space. So open spaces like parks or swimming pools or playgrounds or dog parks that are developed on private property but are open to the public. We are contemplating this with the recognition that we are very built out and we have limited space for more parks. And there's only so much the city can do to overcome those challenges. And so looking for opportunities on private land is something that we can do through the zoning code. We've also heard a lot about parking and are talking about adjusting parking requirements as well as enabling shared parking opportunities. Parking lifts is something that we're looking at to allow for more parks, more parking spaces on small parcels of land. And then we're also talking about adjusting the requirements for apartments, condominiums, and other types of multifamily housing. Lastly, one of the key themes is the interface between residential neighborhoods and industrial uses. So in the city of Santa Ana, we see many different corridors where you find residential neighborhoods right across the street or immediately abutting industrial uses. That's not preferred for obvious reasons. There are impacts to those residential neighborhoods as a result of the industrial activity. And so the staff are recommending adoption of a new zoning district called Business Park, which would help to transition the space in between industrial and residential over time into more office-type uses, maker spaces, some commercial, and uses that help to support the economy while also creating that buffer between the residential neighborhoods and the industrial uses. We'll move forward. These are just some examples of clean industry that could be accommodated in that Business Park zone. So in summary, we've heard these key themes and we've prepared some responses to those key themes. And we've gone out to the public to ask for input on these ideas. We've heard a variety of input from community stakeholders. We've presented to the different commissions. This is the last commission meeting that I'm attending in this series of presentations. And I look forward to hearing feedback from you about some of these key themes and the potential ways that we might address them. With that, I'll express my gratitude. My contact information is on the screen, so feel free to reflect on what zoning could do for open space and other key themes that are concerned to the community members. You can email me or call me. And I'm also open to receiving any comments that you have at this time. Thank you.
Commissioners, do we have any comments?
Yes, I'd like the open spaces and the sidewalk to have more trees. And some of the businesses, are the park areas in between the apartments and the shopping area going to be big park areas? Or are they, exactly what exactly are they going to look like?
So the design, is this still going? Yes. So the design of open spaces would be up to the proposals of the developers. We would have certain requirements for the type of landscaping, the type of trees, the number and type of amenities and so forth. We would review their proposal to find consistency with those regulations as well as, you know, where on the site the open space would be located. They could be required of residential projects as well as commercial projects or projects in the Business Park zone as well. So they'd be situated in places where they're accessible to the public. Quite often, that would be adjacent to the sidewalk or accessible from the sidewalk.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Diaz?
This PowerPoint that you have, it's similar to the workshops that we have had in the city, the zoning workshops?
Yes, this is all part of the zoning code update. There is some confusion over time because we had a Transit Zoning Code update, which is different from this comprehensive zoning code update. This, what we're talking about tonight, is citywide and affects the entirety of the zoning code ordinance as opposed to the Transit Zoning Code, which dealt with just a single area of the city.
Okay, so the meetings are, so the study has been already completed, there are no more meetings?
For the Transit Zoning Code update, that process is concluded and the City Council has adopted that ordinance. For the zoning code update... For the zoning code update, we've concluded the three rounds of public workshops, and then we're moving into the final drafting of the document, which will be released to the community members for additional input. And then, we go to hearings with the Planning Commission and City Council.
It's this?
With this presentation?
This presentation similar to the completion of it?
No, this is presenting where we are at this stage. What's that?
Like the vision?
We're presenting where we're at, at this stage, and talking about what different concerns community members have had, and we're focusing on how we might respond to those concerns of the community members. The scope of this project is much larger than what I've presented tonight because it's a very technical document and very comprehensive. These issues that I've presented tonight are key concerns about housing and parking and the industrial-residential interface. So, we're focusing on gathering more input on those topics.
So, you're still open to receive comments, suggestions, and ideas from anyone in the community?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, so may we share your information?
Yes, please do.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Reyes.
So, on the privately-owned open spaces, can you, how does that, how would that work? They're privately, but public can still join?
Yes, so there are a few different ways that that could happen technically in terms of who owns the property after the open space is built. But the idea is that on private land, we'd have parks that are open to members of the public. And so, instead of just having amenities on an apartment complex, for example, that are open only to residents, it could be open to members of the public as well. So, the design of those spaces would look different than your typical, say, for example, a swimming pool is usually in a courtyard or interior. Dog parks could be located more on the exterior so they're available to other residents. We could have tot lots that are open on the exterior to be available to youth and their families. So, in terms of maintenance and who owns it and how they own it over time could vary, and that's something we still need to discuss to determine if this is a viable option.
Thank you.
Commissioner Torres.
So, this is from Commissioner Torres, Vice Chair Torres, I'm sorry, and I quote, "I think the biggest issue to tackle would be parking because if we are going to have more residential projects in the future, it will exacerbate our current parking issue. I also agree with separating residential from commercial. Also, are there any surveys that residents can provide their feedback if they were not able to make it to the zoning meetings that we can help promote?"
Yes, so we have concluded all of the public meetings. A survey for this type of project is next to impossible because of the technicalities, the technical nature of it, and the comprehensive nature of it. So, we have gone through the series of workshops, and all that information is available online. And so, people can still look back at our prior workshops to see what information was shared, and they can give input through me on that prior information. This last workshop series was recorded, included a virtual meeting, was recorded, and that will be uploaded to the city's YouTube site. And I can share with staff the link to those videos after this meeting.
I have a few questions for you. So, the first one, can you kind of elaborate on, a little more on the residential and commercial space and kind of that idea? For example, like Main Place Mall, like you guys are, I'm assuming, changing the zoning so it can be both?
Yes, so Main Place Mall is a great example of mixed use because they're, on a single property or single project, there's a combination of retail, restaurants, recreation, and residential uses. And so, for that one, there was a specific plan developed to create a master plan for how that whole area is developed over time. Beyond that, the general plan identified several corridors, like South Main Street, West Santa Ana Boulevard, the Grand and Seventeenth area, Bristol, and then also the Dire 55 area on the southeast end of the city. In these areas, the concept is to build mixed use, or to promote the development of mixed use. And depending on what area you're looking at, most of those are commercial and residential mixed use. The 55-Dire area could have a slightly different variation, given the combination of more office buildings alongside the residential uses.
Thank you. And the second one was, so you noted that there's going to be changes on the apartments and the parking. Are you guys going to advocate for more parking, less parking? What is that going to look like for developers? And is that going to be with tax incentives for them, or how is that going to work?
Parking for multifamily housing is a very challenging component to what we do because we've heard very strong voices for more housing. And parking is one of the constraints that limits the ability to develop housing. And so, what we've looked at is what is the standard practice for other jurisdictions in the area, as well as best practices in the industry. And we actually have a much higher parking ratio than other jurisdictions and the industry standard. We also recognize that in multifamily areas, new multifamily areas, you have a very different context than in the historic developments of the city where you see the most parking impact. Those areas were developed before modern parking standards, when people had one car or no cars. And so, you see places where they have a major parking impact have problems with parking, and you see that less in the areas that are more contemporary, where they have more parking required. So, to get back to your question and to first have painted a picture of the complex nature of parking standards for housing, we are proposing a reduction in parking standards, not significant, but a minor reduction in parking standards for multifamily housing.
So, to add more parking spots?
No, a reduction in the requirement, so fewer parking spaces per unit.
See, to promote like more transit and streetcars?
To facilitate the development of housing, to, and that's partly because the multifamily that we do have remaining is located in corridors where we see a lot more transit and transit usage. And so, it works in these places better than it does in more dispersed areas of the city.
Thank you. Commissioner Nelson.
You mentioned Seventeenth and Grand. That area is obviously kind of rezoning itself, I think. I mean, there doesn't seem to be much going on there except in O'Reilly's Auto Parts store. Is there, is that being rezoned, or is it, I mean, I think at one point, we've even talked about, from a Parks and Rec standpoint, it'd be a dream to have a park there, right? So, open space, larger opportunity. Is that being rezoned for multiple, multiple-person housing, or is it going to be, you know, more of a open space?
The general plan established the vision for all of those focus areas, including Grand and Seventeenth. And the vision for Grand and Seventeenth is for that mixed-use, vibrant, more urban type of environment, semi-urban. It's not as intense as other areas of the city. Open space is something that can be permitted in that zone. So, we just need to incorporate open space or parks, park-like facilities into the permitted uses table, which is something that traditionally is how it would work because open spaces tend to be allowed anywhere in the city. If we were to develop a park there, then that would most likely be rezoned to open space specifically to contribute toward our volume of open space within the city, or total acreage, sorry, total acreage of open space in the city.
Understood. So, like that area there being so, I mean, there's nothing been done for the last 10 years there. So, is there actively something being proposed, or do we not know what the plan, I mean, it seems pretty bad to have that much open, non-used buildings within our city, especially on a main thoroughfare, right? So, or do you know?
So, I don't know of any activity specifically on the, you're talking about the northwest corner of Grand and Seventeenth. I don't know of any specific proposed development on that site. We haven't received any applications for land use entitlements there. We have heard about other areas of the city, or other areas of that general vicinity, having some activity, but no applications have been received. In terms of what the zoning code can do to foster that, by adopting new zoning, we can create more development potential, which increases the value and the opportunities on that site. So, it becomes more attractive to the property owners to actually do something.
But if we wanted to put a park there, that wouldn't be in our best interest, would it?
If we wanted to put a park there, we'd have to buy the land.
Right, so we don't want to incentivize, give them the incentives if they're just not going to do anything with it. Maybe this is an opportunity for us to actually go and really look at that, but the parks, I mean, it's a city, because we do need more open space. That's a pretty nice piece of property, so just put it out there.
The zoning code is an implementation of the general plan, and the general plan vision for that area is this mixed-use kind of opportunity. If there was support and interest in seeing open space in that area, then we would need to do an amendment to the general plan in addition to a zone change to make that possible.
Commissioner, Vice Chair Torres.
I already spoke for her, so say one more. My apologies. Speaking for her tonight, guys. My concern is if we, if we're reducing the parking standard, it could create more problems, especially with increasing rent prices. I'm seeing more multifamilies moving into residencies. That was her comment.
I appreciate that comment, and it's, yeah, part of the challenge that we have to wrestle with. The staff recommendation has been to reduce the parking standards in part because of the cost for accommodating more housing, and that recommendation will go forward to Planning Commission for their consideration. It's an opportunity, Planning Commission is an opportunity for community members to express any concerns that they have about reduction of parking standards. And then, of course, the zoning code draft will go on to City Council for their consideration as well. So, I'm making note of the concern that you're expressing, which is very consistent with other concerns that we've heard, and appreciate your comment.
I have one last one as well. Can you go over, Senior Planner Champion, I guess, the percentage or differences of single-family development, like the changes versus zoning for multifamily use? I kind of, kind of piggybacking off what Chair Torres said, I think it's important to have that for family development in the future. Are we seeing more of that? Are you seeing more single-family? Are you guys kind of allocating more to mixed family?
There really isn't a significant change in the ratio between single-family residential and multifamily residential. The change is really in the mixed-use areas along South Main, Bristol, West Santa Ana Boulevard, Grand and Seventeenth. Those areas are where we anticipate seeing the most growth and change. In terms of percentage of the land, between 70 and 75% is currently single-family residential, and that will stay single-family residential. I don't have a percentage off the top of my head for multifamily residential, but, you know, given that 70-plus percent is single-family residential, you get a sense of the remaining, the remaining balance, which makes up industrial, commercial, multifamily. Those all have a significant contribution to the overall percentage in the city.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to present tonight. I'm happy to receive all of the input from each of you, and we'll share that with our team.
Commissioner Diaz, yep.
Just the last question. In the different workshops that you had, what was the public's recommendation or discussion in regards to lowering the number of parking spaces per unit? Was that a discussion, or did they find any other solution? Because let's, what is so far right now, a recommendation per unit, is it one vehicle or 1.5 of a vehicle?
Per unit?
Per unit.
Right now, it depends on the total number of bedrooms, but it's over two parking spaces per unit because you have to accommodate for each of the additional bedrooms.
Okay. So, let's say if it's a one-bedroom, one bath, it would be one parking, and if it's two-bedroom, two-bath, it would be two parkings?
I don't have the number currently off the top of my head because part of it is thinking about the current zone or the current draft. I believe currently it's one parking space per unit.
Okay.
Plus one for the first bedroom, and then beyond the first bedroom, I can't think off the top of my head what it is. But so, for a, for a three-bedroom unit.
Okay.
Shoot, what is it? For a three-bedroom unit, you end up with, I want to say, five parking spaces.
Oh, wow.
And we're proposing more like four parking spaces. So, it's not a huge change, but of course, the change adds up. In terms of what we've heard from community members, we've really heard an interesting mix. Those that want more housing recognize the cost of parking and how that impacts the ability to develop it. Then, there are other stakeholders who believe in transit and want to see us move in that direction, who say we have too much parking. And then, we definitely have a contingent of people that says, no reduction in parking, period.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. I'm sorry I don't have those numbers off the top of my head, but, yeah, it's not a huge reduction. It's maybe one parking space per unit difference between the existing and what we're currently looking at. Thank you.
Great question. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have the public comments section. This is a time for the commission to receive comments from the public. We will not accept any additional requests for speakers, cards, once we begin the public comments session. If you have not already, please submit your request to the Recording Secretary. Speakers will have three minutes to speak. For speakers on Zoom, you must dial *9 from your phone or click the button labeled Raise Your Hand Now to be in the speaker queue once public comments commence. Recording Secretary, do we have any in-person or Zoom public speakers?
At this time, there are none.
All right, thank you, Madam Secretary. Next is the Consent Calendar, Items One and Two. Commission members, are there any items you wish to pull from the Consent Calendar? Is there a motion to approve the Consent Calendar?
I move to approve the Consent Calendar, Item One and Two.
Vice Chair Torres, second set.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Wu and seconded by Vice Chair Zacharias Torres to approve Items One and Two of the Consent Calendar. I'll now conduct a roll call vote. Commissioner Diaz?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Jogway?
Yes.
Commissioner Nelson?
Yes.
Commissioner Reyes?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Wu?
Yes.
Vice Chair Zacharias Torres, yes, and Chair Herrera is absent. Vote is eight ayes, zero nays, one absent. That motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Secretary. Now, we'll move on to the Business Calendar section, or section of the agenda. I'll turn it over to Executive Director Hawk to present Item Three, the Proposed Parks Commission Meeting Schedule and Locations.
Thank you, Commissioner. Well, it's that time again to start planning for 2026. So, what I have before you guys is the
So what I have before you guys is the proposed 2026 PRCSA commission meeting schedule. As we did last year, we experimented with taking the commission on the road, and I thought it was very successful. So we had seven meetings here, and we had four on the road. I'd like to keep with that, uh, same schedule we did last year, and before you is what we have for next year. The only, just so I can go over it, on January twenty-second, you guys did visit the Southwest Senior Center last year. This year, we want to come on over to the Santa Ana Senior Downtown, and then, then we'll have a regular council meeting. March, we will head out to our new Santa Ana Community Center, which will be open by then, so we're excited to show you off that. The next two meetings, April, May, we will come to City Council right here. And then on June twenty-fifth, we are so excited to show you everything going on at the zoo, but we know you will be there before that. But we have our deputy directors here, too, to tell you all the exciting things, so that will be our June twenty-fifth meeting. July, August, September, we will come back here to the City Council chambers. And then in October, we will head on over to the newly renovated New Hope Library, where Executive Director Sternberg is here, and we'll tell you all the excitement about that, as well as what's coming up. And we will visit the main library in 2027, because we've already had a chat about that. And then, as usual, with our November and Decembers, we do combine those to make it into one due to the holiday schedule, so that one will be a special meeting right here in the City Council on December twenty-third. At this time, I open up to any questions or suggestions. If not, we can get this approved, and it will be on the schedule for 2026.
I make a motion to approve its 2026 Park Recreation and Community Service Commission meeting schedule and location.
Have a question. Commissioner Torres?
Are, are there other, um, community centers that we haven't been to that we can add?
There are other community centers, but as this is a brand-new shiny one, I want to sh, show it off. But yes, in the future, other meetings, we can, um, visit other centers in, uh, other years.
Because we have seven, um, scheduled meetings at the chambers. Could we add maybe like, two other meetings at other community centers that we haven't had our meetings at, or visited?
It is possible, if you guys are open to that. You'll just have to make a, I can make a, I can come back to our next council meeting to make a motion. The, uh, places we could go would be Roosevelt Walker, um, Jerome Center, El Salvador, Garfield, and Salgado. Those would be the five that would be able to, uh, hold a meeting, if you'd like.
I like Roosevelt, because we haven't been to that one. And if there's any other that we can add that we haven't had our meetings at, the community centers?
Maybe Salgado.
I like that.
Okay, so are we looking to, if I understand correctly, we are looking to have six at the, away from here, and five in the chambers? Is that my understanding?
Commissioner Diaz?
Okay, my question is, um, I do not want to accommodate any of the different community centers, because they have programming. I would not want the programming to be stopped or moved, only because we're going to have a meeting. I know the community center some are, you know, they use every single room, so I don't want to, um, shouldn't that, the suggestion of Commissioner Torres should be a motion? Of the changes?
It could be, and like I said, it would be so far down, I mean, it is, there is plenty enough time where we could fit this into the schedule if needed, to where we're going to have a, um, Parks and Rec Commission meeting, and maybe we could send it out to the neighborhoods and the surrounding areas, see if they can join us. I mean, it could be, could be seen as a good thing as well, too. But as far as programming, we could make adjustments, because we are far enough out to make those adjustments.
Okay, how about parking?
Each center has its own unique parking and parking depending on what you want to go to. Garfield, we have some parking there with the school, and then we could probably work with the schools, see if they could open up their parking lot to where you guys could walk over.
Do we have any, like, how we had, um, one of the meetings at Santiago? Remember how we had one of the meetings at Santiago, or like, open area of Santiago?
It wasn't a meeting, if you remember. It was, we had to do a corm, and then we went on a Parks and Recreation tour. That's what that was.
Oh, yeah, right, okay.
I mean, it's not out of the question to have a meeting outdoors, but just be aware of the weather could play a factor in it.
Yeah.
Because I have seen, when we have done some of these, one, the meetings that are at the different locations, we've had better turnout for some of the, um, individuals that have come, given more comments versus here, because we're kind of insulated, so something to think about.
Yeah, no, I can, if you'd like, I can, uh, come back next meeting with some suggestions. Sounded like Roosevelt Walker and Salgado are two places you'd like to add to the commission, or I can do it right now, if you'd like. We can add, uh, the May twenty-eighth, we can go to Roosevelt Walker, and then we can go August twenty-seventh to Salgado. All right, now, let me, let me switch those around. Roosevelt Walker on August twenty-seventh, just because we'll do the zoo and library, so be, be a little bit closer for these guys. And then the, uh, the one I suggested, the May twenty-eighth, uh, out at Salgado. If I can get a motion, and a second, and a vote on that, and I can make those, we can make that, um, those changes and make it official, and then I will email you guys the final, or I can come back next commission, but I think we can take care of it right here, if you guys like to.
Can we make an amendment to the motion? Or is that a separate?
No, next, this is, this is a suggested, but if you guys want to make a, some changes, y'all are more than welcome to, and that's what we're here for. And that would be my recommendation, based on what I've heard from you guys, and, and again, it's an easy change for me to do right here, write it, and then I can, next meeting, I can bring a receiving file with the final schedule.
Okay, make a motion for the changes. What was that, August, Salgado?
Yeah, no, August, August twenty-seventh will be at Roosevelt Walker.
Okay.
And May twenty-eighth will be at Salgado.
Okay, and make that amendment, the changes.
Let me see.
Okay. Uh, motion by Commissioner Wu to approve the 2026 Parks and Recreation and Community Service Commission meeting schedule and locations, with the adjustments, uh, to May twenty-eighth and August twenty-seventh meetings. Seconded by Commissioner Nelson. I'll now conduct a roll call vote. Commissioner Diaz?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Jogway?
Yes.
Commissioner Nelson?
Yes.
Commissioner Reyes?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Wu?
Yes.
Vice Chair Zacharias Torres?
Yes.
And Chair Herrera is absent. The vote is eight ayes, zero nays, one absent, and that motion carries.
Now we're going to move to the informational items on the agenda. I'll turn it over to Executive Director Hawk to go over, uh, the Bristol Corridor project, since Suzy's not here.
Yeah, so this is just going to be a more of a, kind of a receiving file, but I wanted to put it here for you guys to see and take a look at as it is in your packet, and then we can always bring it back at another commission meeting with some of our staff. You know, it's a lot of information, and there's a lot of great things happening on that corridor. As you guys know right now, we just renamed, uh, Salvador Cantana Park, which will be, um, a part of this Bristol Corridor, uh, corridor, and, um, like I said, I would just, like I said, wanted to put it here so you guys can see it, and at the same time, gives y'all some time to review it, check it out, and then, you know, when we do send, um, an email out for, we can always bring this back if you guys would like. So that's all I wanted to bring on this one, and, um, like I said, this is the update as of October twenty-twenty-five, and that's all I really wanted to do on this one. So we can move on to five and six. All right?
Perfect. Okay, next, I'll invite Library Service Director Brian Sternberg to present the Santa Ana Public Library Staff Report.
Thank you, Commissioner Jogway. Um, yes, and good evening, uh, members of the commission. Um, I'm going to give you a little brief update on everything that's going on with the, uh, Santa Ana Public Library, uh, for the month of October, give you a little update about, um, some of our projects, a new, uh, bookmobile that we'll have coming very soon here to the city that we've been working on for quite some time. Um, so just a little bit of background on this, this, this particular vehicle. It's been a very long build on this, this one, but it is very close to being done. Um, this is our new Knowledge Mobile XL, so this is built on a Ford F-59 chassis, which is sort of like an extended, large food truck-sized vehicle, uh, much bigger than our Ford Transit van that we have, um, currently. That is our, our, sort of our, has been our Knowledge Mobile over the last few years here. This vehicle was expected to be delivered this week. The city did a final inspection, the city being myself, and a fleet services supervisor and mechanic. We found a few items that we want to get corrected, such as fixing our wrap and making sure, um, you know, it's, it's put on according to best practices, and there's no bubbles or anything like that. Couple little, uh, mechanical items that needed to be taken care of. The white, uh, wheel rims that you see are, need to be swapped out. We have some, uh, some polished aluminum rims that are going to go on the vehicle to make it a little schnazzier. But overall, the vehicle is very close. We're expecting it next month in November, so maybe in about three weeks, uh, to make all those, uh, changes and repairs to the vehicle. I shouldn't say repairs, but just, um, corrections to the build. Um, it has a lot of features on this vehicle. It has self-leveling jacks, so when it's parked in a parking lot like this, the staff can literally just hit an auto leveling, and jacks come down to make sure that the vehicle's stable, even if the ground that it's on is a little off. Why is that helpful? Because when people are on it, books are on it, uh, technology's on it, and there's a lot of weight, you don't want it tipping or moving. It keeps everything really calm and level. This can accommodate more people on the vehicle. Obviously, the, the little Ford Transit van that we have now, our original Knowledge Mobile, it's hard to get people on. We want to be able to get more kids and families and people on these vehicles, and get, uh, more interest generated, so a much larger vehicle is, is going to be a welcome addition to our, our, uh, mobile library fleet now, maybe we can call it that. Um, it's going to have a large, uh, LCD TV, um, that you can't really see it in this picture, but there's a panel that opens up right around where it says Knowledge Mobile there. It opens up, and underneath that is a TV with the, underneath the awning there, that is also motorized and rolls out, so kids can do gaming out there. We can, uh, advertise, um, you know, library programs, services, events while we're out, you know, at an event, um, whatever it might be. Overall, uh, it's going to be a great addition, uh, to the city and to our library services, and we should be expecting it second to third week of November. Moving on, uh, a quick update on our, uh, library capital improvement projects. Um, now that we have opened up our, um, outdoor library at Jerome Park, and our new Dow High branch, uh, which, like I've repeated before, represent, um, you know, the largest expansion of the Santa Ana, uh, Public Library in more than fifty years, we are now turning our attention to make sure we finish up our main library historical renovation, as well as our New Hope Library restoration, um, on time. Um, we can expect both of those projects, uh, next year. The main library will be opening, uh, summer of next year, probably June, uh, or July, we'll have substantial completion, and we will begin moving at that time. So, uh, again, just to repeat, the main library, I know I've mentioned a number of these things before, and of course, you can go on our website and, uh, see the progress. We post pictures, uh, of, uh, our, um, our updates and what's been done to the main library and the New Hope Library, so the entire community can kind of track it with us. But again, that one is going to have a whole restoration of the, uh, the building's facade, which is Italian marble. We're going to bring back, uh, the original design intention and layout of the building, but remember, we're going to incorporate all the newest and greatest technology and spaces, and really modernize, uh, the building, uh, so it fits the year 2025, not the year nineteen fifty-nine, sixty, but it, as you walk through the building, it will feel much more like that original structure. So it truly is a historical renovation. We've also gutted out all the building's mechanicals, which were all end-of-life, you know, things like new electrical, new, um, HVAC systems, plumbing, mechanicals, everything inside the building will be brand-new. The only things that we're keeping are, are windows, which are being, um, re, restored, uh, to, um, uh, sort of the original condition and design, uh, that they, uh, appeared when they were first installed in the year nineteen fifty-nine, and we're doing that using a historical renovation firm, uh, which is a sub of our general contractor, who is literally, um, taking old steel windows and bringing them back to life. So we're not replacing the steel frames, we're actually restoring it. So there's true restorative work that's being done on this building in accordance with, you know, um, standards. We're very excited about it. We plan on having lots of new program services. We'll be offering tours when it first opens up, and I think it'll be a really great welcome addition to the community. Um, and hopefully, we'll serve the library, uh, serve the community with, for library services for decades to come. It's, it's going to be a, an investment now that is going to be, uh, last for generations. Um, same thing with our New Hope Library, right? We're going to, um, totally revamp that library. A few years ago, we did sort of a little, a little modest makeover. We got some new furniture in the building, uh, did some painting in there, and did some landscaping on the outside, replanted some things. This renovation at New Hope is, uh, much more substantial, and is really going to modernize that building. We're going to put in a innovation center, which is going to act like a little technology lab, makerspace, uh, kind of, uh, area of the library. It is going to have a new, uh, community room. We're going to put on an all-new glass facade to the building. Right now, it's just kind of, you know, it's kind of a tan, you know, not nineteen-seventies building, very few windows, so we're, we're going to really lighten it up with a lot of color, and, uh, really make the whole, uh, facility more attractive overall. Uh, so hopefully, we'll get more people in the building, um, serve the community better on the west side of our city. With that, the final thing I want to mention is just a program that we're, we have coming up. Uh, this coming, uh, this Saturday, uh, October twenty-fifth, ten AM to two PM, at the Dow High Library. We have lots of program rolling out, lots of programs rolling out there right now. Uh, but this one, I just want to mention and feature, this is our Dia de los Muertos, Day of the Dead celebration. We're going to have Ballet Folklorico out there, they're going to be do, doing some traditional Aztec dances, and we're going to have Marina Aguilera out there. She's going to be doing a art, um, an art program for the community, so please don't miss this one. Again, that's ten AM to two PM at our Dow High Library. And of course, you can see some of the programs that we've had, like I always, um, put into our report, um, every other month, where we, um, are doing Storytimes, Bubble Mania, we had a pumpkin painting, Palooza, STEM programs, um, and just a wide, wide variety of offerings here. Anime, manga, whatever it is. And we also, uh, this, this month, and, um, going for, for, I think it's a few, um, let's see, actually, yeah, there's one more on the thirtieth. Uh, we have a, a financial aid and FAFSA application, uh, program to help kids, uh, get ready for college and prepare their applications. So that one is, uh, has been at the Dow High Library with a number of dates attached to that. So that is all for my presentation. I'm happy to take any questions you might have.
Uh, I have, I have a few to start. So, thank you, Director Sternberg. Um, the first, first question is regarding the, the public, the bus, do we have a schedule of where it's going to be for the public to kind of view it? I remember it as a kid, actually, it was pretty nice.
Yeah, so we're planning, with, the, since we're not, I'm not one-hundred percent positive on the exact delivery date next month, we're hoping to have it out at the tree lighting, um, little sneak peek on November twenty-second. So I'm, my hope is that we make that, that deadline and get it there. I didn't want to say it, but since you asked, I guess I'll, I'll, I'll let, I'll let it out of the bag right now. Uh, but that, that's the hope, that we could have a, sort of a, a very, um, sort of a preliminary unveiling of the vehicle at that event. That would be my hope. So. So don't hold me to it, but it might be out there on November 22nd for everyone to see. And we'll do a little unveiling. It probably won't have much in it yet, because we have just received it, but that's my, my plan, is to get it out there for the entire community to see. Staff is working on a regular routine schedule for the vehicle as well. I think you, that was kind of a part of this, this question too. And that will coincide with our, our Knowledge Mobile that we already have. So it'll be some added stops and things like that, that we, a big one. And of course, we go to all the special events that we get invited to. We get lots of requests for our Knowledge Mobile every month. That's kind of almost like the bulk of the, in some ways, the bulk of the services. We have schools, and not just SAUSD, but charter schools. All the schools ask for our vehicle to come out. We also, of course, attend all of, you know, PRCSA's great events that they do, like Fiesta Spatres, so we're out there. And yeah, we're working on that schedule right now, so we'll be ready to roll. It probably, after we get the vehicle, we'll, we, we hope to unveil it, and then it'll be a couple more weeks for us to get it loaded up with all the tech and get it ready to roll out and get the schedule finalized, and then you'll see it out on the streets.
The last, last thing, can you just go over, like, why you do what you do and the importance of like a good library?
Oh yeah, for sure, yeah. Libraries, that's a great question. So libraries are, are, in my opinion, essential services, quality of life services to, to the community. They, they are often overlooked, I think, because you don't necessarily see them as a, as a core for a municipal service, you know? Even contract cities, small cities, you know, we all, they all have recreation departments in some ways, even small, like I said, small little ones. But I think the importance of libraries really go hand in hand with the importance of a recreation department. It is really, it's another great space that I call like the, the community's living room, right? It's a place where you can go and connect with your neighbors, you can learn something new, attend a program. And the great thing about most public libraries is that all the services are, are, I shouldn't say all, but 90% of everything we do at the library is generated in-house. That means our staff, these programs that you see here, the vast majority of them, 90% are all dreamed up, developed, executed and delivered right through our Santa Ana city employees. So which is great. Our librarians, our, our clerical staff, they all contribute to, and our administrative staff all contributes to, to pushing out these programs to the community. So libraries are really third places, you know? It's, it's beyond work and, and, and home or school. It's a place that is essential, especially in communities where we might have a limited amount of space available. Like we talk, hey, we don't have a lot of space for, for, for parks and open space because we're built out. We just heard that, right? So these kinds of facilities, just like our community centers, are places where the community can go if they don't have a lot of space at home, or they live in tight conditions and they need a quality place to, to go and maybe just relax and, and, you know, do a, take a sewing class, and it's no cost, because most of these things, we're not contracting out, we develop it, we do it right in-house. So libraries, I think, are, have transitioned from depositories for information to more of active community connection spaces, right? That means places where people can go, connect, create, explore, you know, whatever you want to call it. But they really are, I, I think, the, in the year 2025, one of the last, you know, free community spaces that people can enjoy without any cost or, or question about who you are, or where, or where you came from, or, or anything like that. And so I think it's, it's a, it's a proud moment when the city can invest these kinds of funds and take a look at the library services we have and make sure we're, we're good and we're, we're on top of our game for the next 50 years, right? And I think with all these projects, we're, we're doing that. And thank you to, you know, for your support from the commission, the city council, and all the city staff for allowing this to, to come to fruition for these projects that we're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Sternberg. Next, I'd like to invite Zoo Deputy Director Ethan Fisher to present the Santa Ana Staff Report, Zoo Staff Report, sorry.
Sure. Good evening, Commissioners. It's great to be back again. I have a report for you prepared, that you can see in your packet, and then I'm going to go through a few highlights that we have on the screen behind you as well, with pictures. Couple updates. Throughout the year, we have all different animal transfers that happen. Some animals come in, some animals go out. We work with other facilities, some are confiscations that come in, a couple that are in process right now. On the right-hand side is our beautiful ocelot, Tiago. He's in the process. He's going to be going to the Cleveland Metro Park Zoo next week. So there's a lot of coordination and things that happen in order to make an animal transfer work successfully. There's an exchange of medical records and we do an exam before he's, to make sure he's healthy before he can go and be transported. There's permit requirements, all different things. So he's going to Cleveland with a recommend, a breeding recommendation, so he's going to be paired with a different animal there, with the hopeful goal of having some kittens in the future. And then on the left is a new species that we're receiving. That's a Chinese alligator. There's two different species of alligators in the world, the American alligator and the Chinese alligator. That's a smaller species, there's not that many of them who are in the world, and it's an endangered species, and we're receiving two of them from the Bronx Zoo for our Children's Zoo. Hopefully, within the next couple of months, they're in the process of doing like what I just said, preparing the shipment and doing any medical testing and sending us the records in order to prepare for that. So that's exciting. That'll be a totally new species for us. And anytime we can bring in a reptile, it's, it's always popular with the public. Another one that we're really proud of, and hopefully you'll be able to see in the very near future, out in the zoo, are, are spider monkeys. So we have worked with the Wildlife Confiscations Network, and we've been able to provide a home for eight juvenile spider monkeys that were victims of animal trafficking. So they were animals that were taken from their home in the wild in Mexico or in Central America, trafficked through, through the border into the United States. Someone purchased them as a pet, or they were intercepted before they were sold to be pets. And oftentimes, they come in with malnourishment and in poor shape or having issues. They have to be triaged and then, and then we, and then a permanent home has to be found for them where they can be taken care of and raised. So we've been able to assemble and provide a home for eight of them and then combine, and then introduce them to our adult spider monkey, Patrick. And they're all living together now behind the scenes. And they'll be moving in, hopefully in November, into the River's Edge, the new habitat with the, that we saw during the tour with the trail system. And they're just bundles of energy and they're going to be all over the place. So definitely going to be fun for everyone to see, and we're happy to provide that home for them, like I said, and then also educate the public about what is, what is going on more broadly speaking and how to help protect these animals. So the spider monkeys, they're really adorable there. That was when they were with us, I think, just like in the first month or two. Very, very tiny when they first came in. They're still pretty small. Please? Oh, also, before we go on to Dr. Moore, I'll add the, so the spider monkeys are one of the animals that'll be living in River's Edge, in addition to howler monkeys, golden lion tamarins, which is a species we don't have right now. And then the otters are hopefully coming pretty soon. They've already had all their medical testing done and they're in the process of sending us all the records and getting that all sorted. They're coming from Utah. The, the first otters, we're receiving the river otters. And then later on, we're receiving a different species, giant river otters, which is a more extensive transfer because they're coming from Europe. So those will probably not be here for about a year. But we'll have otters for, for the ribbon cutting. Now we can go on to Dr. Moore. Excited to introduce Dr., Dr. Kate Moore, who is now our, as of Tuesday, she started her first day as our first full-time zoo veterinarian with the city of Santa Ana, which is just amazing, the, the things that she'll be able to help us with and do and be involved in will be much more than we were able to do when we had a consulting veterinary situation. So that's her, she was doing a wellness check on one of our ring-tailed lemurs. And hopefully, we can bring her out before the commission sometime and, and introduce her. And then also, we're talking about having some times during the day, or during the week, where we can have like a meet the veterinarian for the public and have her out in the zoo with, in front of one of the animal habitats and people can ask questions. Because I would say veterinary science is one of the things that we get the most career questions about, from, from kids and the public broadly. They always want to know about the veterinarian. And so hopefully, we can make more connections there for people. It's a, it's a great career field. There's a lot of opportunities. Next, please. I think this may have been shared at the last meeting, but I'll get to share it now too. So we went in September, on September 15th, we received accreditation from the Association of Zoos and Aquariums, which is a huge, huge achievement for us. It's been eight years working towards that, and especially a lot of momentum in the last couple of years towards this goal. Modifying the, the 50 monkey deed for the, for the zoo was a big thing. Finishing all the construction around the zoo, like apartments across the street and Zoo Lane, and then updating the, some of the primate habitats in the zoo, finishing River's Edge to substantial completion, all those things, the staffing improvements, adding the zoo veterinarian, all those things went in to contribute towards the accreditation. So super proud of that, and it opens a lot of doors. What is, what does accreditation mean to us? I think at a previous meeting, we talked about what that process was. Like you have to file application and then there's a two-day inspection with a team of professionals. And, and then you go before the commission to have a formal hearing. But what it means, there's definitely the ease of permitting, so state and federal permits, there's some waivers and exemptions we get being accredited that just make it much, much easier to, to operate. There's also more availability to work with other zoos and aquariums that are accredited for transferring animals and acquiring animals, more professional learning opportunities for the staff. It makes it a little bit easier to retain our quality staff because they want to work at an accredited institution, not come to us on their stepping stone to an accredited institution. Also for the public, it is a signal to the public that is aware of it, that you're meeting a really high standard and you want to be accredited because keeping up with the evolving standards will help you maintain a safe facility, keep the, at the forefront of animal well-being improvements, and, and then just be the best zoo or aquarium you can be. So that's accreditation in a nutshell.
And if I can interrupt, if I interrupt you on this one, Ethan doesn't give enough credit, you know, to him and his team, but I do, because I was there. And I want to share with you how the accreditation went, and it's something you don't see. It's something that was, I mean, you could say it's magical, it's amazing, it's what you don't, you just don't see it. So we went over to Tampa Bay to the conference, and we had our scheduled meeting. We went in there and went about 15 minutes, if that, 15 minutes. We had three, we had, they had three questions, or a couple of questions were at Ethan, a couple of questions were at Dr. Moore, and then the last question came to me. Then there were a lot of people in this room, you know, which was, I would say it was a little rare to see something like that.
Probably about 25 people.
But, you know, from the last time we went, it was different, because I noticed people in there, I was like, okay. So we left. And, you know, not before we get the room, everyone's like, God, that was quick, oh my God, what's going on? You know, our team's like, what did we do? One of the gentlemen came back to grab us, and it was the gentleman from Disney. I was like, hey, we have one more question for you guys we forgot to ask, if you guys can come back. So of course, everyone's freaking out. He opens up the door for us, our team walks in, and every single person in that room was standing up with a round of applause for the Santa Ana Zoo team to let us know how proud they were of us and to how honored they were for us to get our accreditation back. And that's something you do not see, you know? I mean, the LA Zoo Director, Eric, who was also the president, was there. A lot of our neighboring zoo directors were there, and they were all there in full support of what Ethan and his team has done. And I can tell you, since I've been here, we tried for it in Baltimore, and, you know, we were a little bummed that we didn't get it, but we didn't get a no. But it challenged our team to go out there and continue to do better, to do more. And the team came, the accreditation team came, and we went into Tampa Bay and this team got a standing ovation from probably 30, 40 people in there. And that's something that was, it, it hit you, it hit you running appeals, and I just wanted to point that out, that this zoo team you guys have is extraordinary. And I'm excited for you guys to get out there and see what this team has done to the zoo. I mean, I would just say in the past year, but the past three years, past four years, it's amazing. So just want to interrupt you and let them know about, you know, how the accreditation went and how very proud we are of Ethan and the team he leads.
Thank you.
We also, I thought we were also going to clap for you and the tremendous how proud we are.
It was, it was a great honor going there and having that reception from the commission. It was kind of like, welcome back to the family. We're so, we're so proud of everything that you're doing and the momentum you have as an organization and how you have really like turned, turned the ship around from where you were, which were some, some tough times for us for a little bit. So yeah, that's super amazing. Thank you. No, it's great. Another super exciting, so many, so many projects that are either coming towards completion in the middle or just about to get started. The Hive Education Building, so this is partly funded by a state grant we received, Senator, through Senator Umberg's advocacy a few years ago. And this is going to be a brand new indoor multipurpose room that's, can be used as a classroom, Parks and Rec Commission meeting. It could be used for special exhibits on like a weekend if we're doing a special, special event or something, potentially rentals. It'll fit about, about 150 to 175 people seated at tables for an event or something. And then it'll have an outdoor patio, and it's adjacent to the big grass lawn, if you're familiar with the zoo, where we do, where we do some of our events, like the fundraising gala. It's directly adjacent to that. So it's in line with the, the master plan for the zoo and about to start a break ground in the next couple of weeks. Construction contract was awarded by city council, and it'll take about 10, 11 months to finish completion. And I just think that's going to be a great, great addition to the zoo and really expand our opportunities on what type of programming and amenities we can offer. Sometimes we need a larger indoor space and we just, we have a classroom upstairs at the barn, but this will be bigger than that. And it's first, first floor, which makes accessibility a lot easier for people that have mobility challenges. They don't have to deal with the elevator or stairs. Talking about accessibility improvements, a project I've talked about at some of the previous commission meetings is our pathway project, which is just about complete with this first phase of that, which included concrete pathways throughout the whole front area of the zoo, around the playground and the cafe, all the way up to River's Edge. So now you can get from the front entrance all the way through to see the monkeys and the otters on, on a solid path. We had our first rainstorm with the new pathways, which was exciting to walk out there and see how the pathways were doing. There's a couple tweaks we're making, but we didn't have to close, there was no muddy areas, we had to cone off or anything like that, like we normally have to do during rainstorm. It helped us, we had a school group that has reservation the day of the rain, they were able to come still, they had umbrellas, they, they didn't have to cancel, take a rain check, anything like that. So it's a huge improvement. You can go through the zoo without, you have a stroller, getting your stroller tires all muddy and putting it back in your car. And well, there's a couple other areas of the zoo that still need concrete pathways, but the goal is to have one solid asphalt or concrete pathway that takes you through the whole zoo. the whole zoo. There might be a little smaller paths that are dirt, but one main path at least. So, and this is a mosaic, it's kind of a little centerpiece area around this tree that has a couple mosaic animals from the zoo that are embedded in the concrete. There's a Koochun monkey and a macaw, and then there's otters swimming in the middle around there. So it's kind of fun, a little element that they added in. Also, talking about walkways, a brand-new crosswalk is done. This is at the intersection of Zoo Lane and Chestnut. Previously, you would make an unprotected left to come to the zoo if you're coming from the freeway. Now there's a light signal there, makes it much easier to get to the zoo, safer. And, and then this really neat crosswalk that has some different animals from the zoo that are embedded in the crosswalk. So hopefully, on the next zoo tour, we'll be able to check this out. Next slide, please. And then, I think at the last meeting, I talked about the Eco Center, it has the new exhibits. We're in the process of getting the turtle tank set up still. It's getting water next week, next Friday, it's getting water and then it'll be up and running and then hopefully, soon after, we can introduce the inhabitants and then get it ready for a grand reopening. It is, it is open now to come and visit, on the weekends especially, but, and there is programming there, but we want to do a big grand finale and invite all of our partners that have been involved in redeveloping the center and highlight everything that's going on in there. So that's the Eco Center. And then Buit, the zoo, happened last weekend, it's happening again this weekend, Saturday and Sunday. There are Santa Ana resident tickets available again. There's a very, there's like an administrative fee of $2 to, for the resident tickets, but that's substantially discounted from the non-member, the member rate, I believe is $15 and the non-member rate is like $30. So resident tickets are very, very nominal in cost. Basically, we found when there was zero fee, people RCP'd and they took all the tickets within a couple of days and then only half the people showed up. So now with this, everyone that's actually getting the tickets is actually coming, so it's improved the availability and accessibility of, for families that actually, that want to come to the event. So we still have it on the 25th and the 26th, there's still tickets available for residents, so feel free to share. I know our recording secretary came last weekend, I missed you. And then, and that's also a great chance to take photos with all of our great Parks and Recreation Library mascots. They have really cute Ghostbusters outfits, costumes, so please, please come and enjoy. Brew at the Zoo, fresh off the press, you can put it on your calendar right now, May 16th from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. It doesn't overlap with any, anything else, holidays. And, yeah, it'll be back great, there'll be different, lots of different local breweries represented, some different bites that are available, we always have different food options that are available for free, and then there's usually something if you want a more substantial meal for purchase. And the zoo is all open, so that's coming up in May, which is very busy, it's like not that many months away, like six months. And I always, and there's always volunteer opportunities at the zoo, Parks and Recreation, the library, if you know anyone, there's information on the website for volunteering. There's also the youth employment program and then there's different part-time jobs available regularly. So happy to answer any questions.
For volunteers, what activities or things do you need help with in the volunteer?
Most, most of the volunteers start out working with the education team as an interpreter out in the zoo, helping guests, answering questions about different animals. You might sort of float around different areas of the zoo, talking about different animals and improving everyone's experience when they're there. Then some volunteers move on to assisting with education programs, especially in the springtime, we have a lot of education programs in the mornings during the week and we set up one or two days of the week. One of the programs we have, the Zoo Explorer, we have stations that people are at and the different school groups stop at all the different stations throughout the zoo where they have different activities or animal artifacts, biofacts, and they can learn. So those are some of the things we have, it really depends on, on the personal interest. Some, some volunteers will help out at the animal contact yard with the goats or at the butterflies. And then more established volunteers that want to move into animal care will often then try to go and assist the zookeepers later on after they have been coming for a little while. So that's, and then there's, there's some volunteers that we have that are just want to come for one day, so they might come and just help out with a special event as a, as a one-time thing and aren't looking for a long-term commitment.
And you provide the training needed?
Yeah. It, it, we have orientations, there's an online Zoom video you watch and then, and then there's an in-person orientation where we go through the process and all the different volunteer roles that are available. And then if everyone is still interested, then they can pursue the application in the onboarding process. But we try to make it very transparent, so everyone knows, okay, is this a good match or not? Is this, is this work for me and what I'm interested in?
Our senior centers had the opportunity to go a couple months back and we were amazed by the butterfly enclosure, it was spectacular.
Thank you.
Very enjoyable.
I remember when the seniors came, yeah, I'm glad they were able to go to there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Vice Chair Zacharias Torres?
And, and I quote, are there any updates on the sign at the Eco Center on the Santiago Park side?
On the Santiago Park, as the park redevelopment, that project I have not been closely involved in. I know probably the Public Works Parks team has been working on designing of that project and Susie had been involved. I know there was like a community meeting they had with a consultant out there and some of the zoo staff, I think they may have talked to you during that meeting, when there was some discussion about replacing the interpretive signs that are throughout, that are really like worn out with updated information. So I know, I know the, the education team from the zoo has been involved in keeping tabs and I know, based on what they told me at the last, from the last meeting where that was onsite at Santiago Park, there was some discussion about the bridge placement and different things like that. So I don't have any updates beyond what I heard from that last meeting that involved the community.
Regarding the, the career thing that you were talking about, so for people, young kids that might be interested in it, how do you, how does one become a deputy director for the zoo? Can you go over?
There's a, there's a lot of different paths that people can take. If you end up in a leadership role in a zoo or aquarium or museum, quite often, a lot of folks start as a volunteer at some, at some point in their career. Some, some people end up as like a zoo director may come from the animal care side, they may have been a zookeeper and then a curator or a manager and then work their way up into that leadership role. Veterinarians have moved into that role. And then some people come from entirely different backgrounds, from like the hospitality industry. For example, there's some, some folks at, in the San Diego that have moved into those roles from like the hotel hospitality industry. It just varies, you, you definitely, it, it depends on the organization. And there's also learning opportunities that are offered through the Association of Zoos and Aquariums to, to develop people that have aspirations for, for becoming a manager or director of a facility. Yeah, for me personally, my background is in biology and business administration and landscape architecture.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Thank you Deputy Director Fisher. We will now close the meeting with any closing comments. Executive Director Scott, do you have any closing comments?
Good meeting, guys, long meeting, just a couple of updates. You guys should have received an email from me, I believe, yesterday of what we have coming up this weekend. So just, I will go over them real quick. Tomorrow, we will be at El Salvador for Harvest Fest, so we'll have holleroom costumes, we'll have pumpkin, so we'll have a bunch of fun stuff out there with the kids, so if you guys can join us, please do. Like I said, Saturday, we, we have two events going on, actually three, because I'm going to mention this, I want to talk about the stadium here in a little bit. At Jerome Center, we have our big spooktacular from 2:00 to 5:00. That is a big fun event with, we got a haunted house, we have costumes, we have prizes, it's a really, really fun time out there at Jerome, so you guys can make it, that's from 2:00 to 5:00. And then as Deputy Director Fisher said, this is weekend two at Buit the Zoo. We had a great crowd last weekend and the weather is looking to be really phenomenal this weekend, so we hope that you guys can, you know, come out there and see all the amazing things that this team is doing. And then I want to highlight our athletics team. So starting tonight, our stadium has four games in three days. So tonight, we have Santa Ana High School playing football, tomorrow night, we have Modern Day playing football, and then on Saturday, we have a doubleheader with Santa Ana College playing at 1:00 p.m. and then we have Vista Charter School playing at 6:00 p.m. So it's really neat to see RCA being used and people come out to watch the football game. So I just wanted to highlight what America, Miguel and Ricardo are doing on their end of our athletic side and it's just great to see that stadium being used and these teams using the showlights and having fun out there and then, you know, the soccer teams are coming and do that as well, too. So other than that, I do want to thank you guys for all the love and support you guys do show us and especially with Brian and Ethan here and what they do. So that's all I have to say for right now until the closing comments from Ms. Torres. So again, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Director Scott. Finally, any commission member closing comments? Commissioner Diaz?
Okay, so first, I'm kind of sad that Susie's leaving us, that was a total shocker. But I wanted to thank Brian, we're looking forward to seeing the new bookmobile. I really enjoy seeing all the different workshops that you have and it's, it's very well put together on, on social media and I always like to share it. And the art, now I go with the zoo, the art on, on the street looks very nice. I saw it and I drive by there like twice a week, so it's, it's very nice. I can't wait to see the different improvements and getting, you know, seeing the little monkeys throughout the improvements you have at, at the zoo. And your zoo is beautiful, it is always very clean and it's very welcoming. For that, thank you so much. And yes, I was going to mention the stadium, the new seats are very, very comfortable and it's, the stadium is always very clean, your staff is very friendly and the lights look amazing. I was there for the Santa Ana game, the homecoming, I went to Santa Ana homecoming game, I graduated from Santa Ana High School and then I was there, of course, for, for the Modern Day one, too. But, you know, to America, it's, it's clean and the staff is really nice and the seats are just amazing and I really enjoyed the lights. And, and thank you so much for all the programming, too, that you have in the different community centers. Your staff is always very friendly. For that, thank you.
I'll be sure to let my team know that, so thank you for the kind comments.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Just want to thank you both, also you Director Scott, for keeping us so well-informed with all our city activities. Thank you for all that innovation you're bringing to our libraries and all the fun things that we have to do at the zoo. Thank you all so much.
All right, I'll go. Just kind of piggyback on everybody saying, recreation, sport, knowledge, it's all helping our community and we need it all for the development of our city, so just thank you everyone for what you're doing and we'll keep going. Commissioner Nelson?
Yeah, I'm still shocked with Susie's exit, but I'm sure I'll see her walking her dogs. But just to, I mean, any plans, is there somebody to replace her yet or are we just, are we all still in shock?
We're also a little bit in shock, but, you know, we have hopefully a planned place to, you know, put it out there and, you know, see, we get some great park planners out there and I think with what the city's doing with, you know, Public Works, with our Parks Maintenance Team, and you guys see how great our parks are looking and, you know, it's not perfect, but, you know, we are working and tirelessly working to, you know, eliminate other problems when it comes to the needs of the community. So we look to continue to do that and work together and get that Parks Planning Team back up to full strength soon.
Got it, yeah, and thank you guys for your presentations. Looking forward to seeing the new library and, and I'm really excited to get to the zoo. So, yeah, thank you, guys.
Commissioner Reyes?
Thank you, everyone. As well, I've seen the sidewalk at the park, I took my, my grandkids, it's amazing and I go there once in a while with my grandkids in the mornings and they love it, I love it, too, and I feel like very proud to be part of that zoo that is in my city. And I can't wait to see the library because we were talking about all those changes that were, you know, going to be made and I, I can't wait to see it. And I thank everyone for everything that it's, all those projects that you guys are doing are great. I mean, our city is getting better and better and I'm very happy and proud to be part of
Commissioner Rodriguez?
So I'm also, I share the same sentiment as all the other commissioners as far as being thankful for everything that you guys have done, all the knowledge that you guys provide us, all the events that you guys throw. I don't know how you guys still have energy, like it's barely Thursday and I just want to sleep. I am looking forward definitely to going to the zoo and seeing the pathway accessibility. As most of you know, I do have difficulty walking sometimes, I get tired and, you know, I know for the Kaboom Project, I had said, you know, hopefully there was more benches because, you know, we do get tired, it's not like, we're not, we can't keep up. So I'm definitely excited about that. I will try to make it out to Buit the Zoo, it's a family tradition. I took Jesse ever since he was such a baby and like now, I take my other kids because Jesse's too cool now. So I'm definitely going to try to make it out. And before I end this, I did want, I did want to mention that I asked Director Hawk Scott for pink shirts for Parks and Recs because I saw him wearing one at the Kaboom Project and I got told no, but that's okay. October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, but I just want to remind everyone that early detection makes a difference, please go get checked. And I just want to say hi to Susanna, who's a dear friend and is going through breast cancer, so I send her all my love. Thank you.
Commissioner Wu?
Yes, I want to mention about the Harvest Festival at El Salvador Park as 4 to 6 each tile, well, up to 100 or 150 kids. We have pumpkins to provide and they can decorate it and we have prizes there. And Veronica has told me this is its ninth year that we proudly have been working as a family together, so to speak, with Park and Rec and we appreciate the help to put this event for us and help us because it's been a vision of the Artisan Flower Neighbors to have something in the community that people can walk to and not have to go to Irvine or somewhere else, but provide it here for the families in our community. So I really enjoyed it, so I'm looking forward for tomorrow. Also, I was very glad to hear about the Bristol Recreation Corridor and I would like to know if we can get a presentation going on at El Salvador Park to give to the community as one of our neighborhood meetings, if that is possible, so I could get some reaction from the community and I can bring that back to our, our meetings here. So that's what I'd like. And, yeah, the whole staff I have had a lot of help with and I really appreciate all the work that's being done. Thank you.
Vice Chair Zacharias Torres?
And I will be reading, Vice Chair Torres-
And I will be reading Vice Chair Torres' final comment, and I quote, "Thanks, everyone, for the updates. I'm looking forward to, to seeing follow-ups with the policy on preserving murals. At the previous city council meeting, there was a directive for all departments to see where they can provide funds to go to ayuda sin fronteras to help families affected by ICE. I'm hoping Parks and Rec can see where they have room to assist with ayuda sin fronteras, since we have seen a decrease in participation in our city events. As a reminder, please call the OC Rapid Response Network if you see any ICE activity at seven one four eight eight one one five five eight, because Santa Ana se ama y protege."
All right. And lastly, I wanted to shout out in that event that's on the thirtieth, for the FAFSA meeting, that's going to help people go to, to college, so parents that have kids that are kind of in that zone, it'd be good to go look at that, so it's very important. The next Parks and Rec Community Service Commission Special Meeting is scheduled for Thursday, December fourth, at the City Hall Council Show, it's at five thirty P.M. Before the commission, I hereby adjourn the meeting.
Wait, hold, 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 I have one more thing, boys and girls. I do want to give a round of applause to Josh for stepping up as our, you know, temporary vice, or chairperson, a round of applause. And we wish you, Ms. Torres, you get healthy soon. So you may close the meeting, just want to give a shout, you did a great job, so thank you for stepping in.
Thank you.
So the next meeting is, not December third? Twenty twenty-six, I'm sorry, we're in twenty twenty-five. Sorry.
No problem, no problem. So I hereby adjourn this meeting at seven twenty-five P.M.